All right, good morning. I'd like to call the border of the May 5th, 2015, meeting of the Statesboro City Council. We have on our agenda to have our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilman Travis Chance, who is not here yet. So, I'm gonna go ahead and do our invocation and lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Please back, yes. Heavenly Father, thank you once again for allowing us to convene this way in a free country to exercise our opinions, to exercise our ability to have elected officials, and thank you for just allowing us to have the civil rights that we have. We are very blessed in this country. We recognize that, and we thank you wholeheartedly for that. Bless everyone in this room, bless our elected officials. Please give us the wisdom to make just and right decisions on behalf of the electorate and the walls of this country. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 3, which is the portion of our agenda where we have recognitions and public presentations. I know everybody's very excited to hear about the America's Best Community Grant Award that was recently awarded to states as one of, I believe, forty-nine communities.
Around fifty.
Out of fifty to receive that. So, if you could come forward, Mr. Alan Muldrew, and tell us about that.
Well, I think this award reflects what our mayor prayed about. We've got a good community that works together, and obviously it wouldn't have happened without everybody contributing, so I wanted to actually take this time to thank the team that came together. We were -- this was a nationwide grant, and we were one of fifty finalists, and then there's round two and round three, and we're gonna work hard for those other ones. And I feel really confident about our group that does it. So, I want to especially thank Mandy. Raise your hand, Mandy. She did a great job. It took a -- they asked a lot of questions, and nobody can have the data and could word it like Mandy could. So, she was a big part of it. And Andy Wilson with the BeBRED Bureau of Research Economic Development with Georgia Southern. There she is. Raise your hand again. She helped compile all that information. She did a lot of research to help put it together, and we certainly appreciate -- I think David Artson is here, but they are -- Tim here? Tim, raise your hand. They are an -- they understand as an art center economic development, and he also helped write some of it, and also is the conduit which we were required to go through. So, we're grateful to his organization as well. So, just wanted to thank all those folks, and hopefully maybe in about six minutes we'll have some more interviews. So, thank you, Mayor.
Six minutes?
Six months.
So, Alan, tell us something, if you don't mind real quick. Can you just sort of let folks know what the next level is and the process that you'll be going through to get prepared for that?
Yes. Well, this one, this round allowed us to show our vision, show the community works together, show all the different organizations that we can agree and work on things together. So, that first round said that we qualified as a community, that we had projects. So, right now, we're kind of still focused. Our original intent was the Blue Mile, and the redevelopment of that, our South Main Street Revitalization Committee is still going strong, and they were part of this order, part of this application. So, what this money will go for is now to start putting numbers together, start putting renderings and drawings, economic data, engineering costs. So, we'll probably try to find somebody that does South Main Street Economic Studies, and we'll put that together and show little increments of what we're doing, and submit that for the next round, and hopefully they'll see that this project that we're working on is worthy of their grants.
The first one, we won among fifty. How many advocates?
About two hundred.
About two hundred? And the next round, we'll compete out of these spots?
Hundred. The next round is, they pick fifteen finalists out of the fifty. They'll take eight of those, and then they're awarded a hundred thousand, and then you compete out of those for three, two, and one million dollars.
Awesome.
We'll see. If not up in six months, you'll know we didn't get it, but...
Well, I think one thing that's important to know is that it's a third -- you're matching out of the SDA fifteen thousand.
That's correct.
So, it's a thirty-five thousand dollar grant with a fifteen thousand dollar match. So, one thing I said, "Mandy, please look at what the match is," as we go up the ladder.
No more matches now.
Okay. Just double-checking.
Yeah.
I said, "Would it be important?" No, not that that's a bad thing.
No. Now, we've got...
If we need to match more, then we want more, so...
That's right. But I think from here on, we've got at least, at the end of the day, we've got enough money to do some serious studies on South Main Street, which will give us a good plan to go for.
Okay. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your hard work. Item 3B is presentation of a proclamation for Shine Clubhouse with Pylin, recognizing May 7th, 2015, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in Statesboro. So, as you can see, we have a lot of folks from the Shine Club here. I'm gonna ask Jason, do you mind speaking a little bit to this, Jason? I know that you were involved in putting it together.
Yes, ma'am. I met with the ladies here from the Shine Clubhouse in Pylin a few weeks ago regarding the Children's Mental Health Awareness Day and the Adopt Spot Program in Statesboro. Very interested in adoption location. So, we worked with them to adopt a location on Pittmore. I think one of the ladies are very familiar with that location. They live in that area. And now the kids are very excited about this project. Looking forward to beautifying the neighborhood and getting some participation for the kids in the program.
Do you want to say anything?
We just thank the city for the opportunity to be a part of our community, and we thank y'all for recognizing not only Children's Mental Health Week, but May being Mental Health Month, and everything that we can do for these young people will make a difference, and that's Pylin's motto is making a difference. So, we're so excited, and our children are really into the Adopt a Spot, so we appreciate that opportunity. And come by Shine Clubhouse this Friday. We're gonna be having an open house, and you'll be seeing your tax dollars at work and really making a difference with these young people in their lives. They're really shining.
Okay, so what time? Friday? Okay, great. So, let y'all stand up to everybody, what time it's supposed to be?
It's gonna be Friday from twelve o'clock to two o'clock at the clubhouse. We're on 131 North Collins Street, so we invite everybody to stop by. We'll have refreshments and lots of giveaways, and we'll be able to tell you a little bit about, a little bit more about what we do at the clubhouse.
Okay. Let y'all stand up to everybody, we need a proclamation. Let's pull up, gather up this way. Kind of gather around that way and look out that way. Y'all, do you mind taking a picture? Let's get up here and ready. You've got everybody up there? Okay. Somebody trying to hide? All right. This is a proclamation by the mayor and city council of Statesboro, Georgia for National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of Statesboro, Bullock County. And whereas the need for comprehensive coordinated mental health services for children, youth, and families places upon our community a critical responsibility, and whereas it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts toward our children's mental health and well-being. And whereas Shine Clubhouse with Pylin BHDD, with its unique approach to serving children and adolescents, is effectively caring for the mental health needs of children, youth, and families in our community. Now therefore, IJNJ Moore, Mayor of Statesboro, do hereby proclaim May 7th, 2015, Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. In the city of Statesboro, I urge our citizens and all agencies and organizations interested in meeting every child's mental health needs to unite on that day in the observance of such exercises, as will acquaint the people of Statesboro with the fundamental necessity of a year-round program for children and youth with mental health needs and their families. Thank you. All right. Agenda 3C is recognition of the city of Statesboro Slim by Sixteen First Quarter Winner. Mr. Jeff?
Good morning, Council. Jeffrey Grant, Director of Human Resources. As you guys know, health wellness is real important to us in the city of Statesboro, and currently we have about, probably about, close to one hundred and thirty, one hundred and forty, probably close to one hundred and fifty employees participating in our Slim by Sixteen, as well as our Fifth by Sixteen as a whole. I mean, that's about half of our, a little bit less than half of all of our employees that we have. So, without further ado, we do have a first quarter winner. Each quarter, we will come up and share the quarter winner with you. And the first quarter winner is actually from the police department, and it is Yvonne Lane, and it is a surprise to her today, and we're very proud of her. And Mayor, if you could, she's surprised right now. Mayor, if you could step down, we're gonna present Yvonne with a hundred dollar bonus check. And we'll also present her with a certificate that she can post in her office. She was actually a monthly winner as well, too, so we congratulate her on that.
This bit on days I did a lot, it just doesn't register. I mean, it just says that you did zero.
Oh, man. You gotta serve up more.
I mean, I'm so proud of myself. One day I did almost seven miles and went zero. I mean, for me, that's speaking. Okay.
Watch the story.
Battery works the next day, you show them all.
Mayor, watching the Masters isn't actually walking.
Walking ain't between me.
Apparently a lot, Danny. Oh, yeah. I'll put myself up for that. I don't recall seeing you on public comment. Have you asked him since?
It's hard to ride.
I'm sorry. Can you please escort Ms. Penny here out? Oh, gosh, am I motivated now? Can this bear thing pull the plug?
We gotta be convincing.
Well, you can, okay. Just stop, stop. You're digging the hole.
Put that in the big round.
All right. Item 3D, this is exciting, I think. Party foul, front row. We're gonna have a presentation by Georgia Southern students Katie Reams and Abby. I'm gonna make sure, Abby, is it Pellic or Pellics?
Pellic.
Pellic. Okay. For their winning living wall vertical garden design to be constructed and planted in the Smith Alley between the FabLab buildings. So, why don't you guys come up front and show us what we're gonna get it?
Good morning. I'm Abby Pellic. I'm a sophomore chemical engineering major. I'm Katie Reams. I'm a graduate student with the biology department and the public administration department.
And we're the project coordinators for the Living Wall Downtown Project. The next slide kind of has a gist of what we're doing. So, the living wall is supposed to be green space for downtown Statesboro that connects the city campus to the Georgia Southern campus, as well as downtown Statesboro. We've had student involvement throughout the whole process, so the design that you'll see in a minute is a collaboration of three different student groups that had submitted designs, and we're supposed to have student involvement for the construction and for the maintenance after it's constructed.
All right. We're also gonna be looking at taking data collection, which I, as my graduate project for the biology department, am going to set up a protocol manual for student, excuse me, students to collect data throughout the living wall lifespan. We're gonna be looking at temperature changes from the alley currently, right now, what it's reading, and what it's reading once the living wall is developed and has plant growth. We're gonna be looking at water collection with the rain barrel system that we're setting up, how much storm water are we diverting, given the area that we're using, and how much water are we saving. We're also gonna be looking at plant CO2 diversion. How much are they taking in? So, those are some things that we're gonna be looking at, and as I said, I'm gonna create a protocol manual that students can easily follow, looking at either developing a webpage, hopefully, that they can put that on, and that students and residents can access and see that we are making a sustainable effort.
This slide is the winning design for the living wall. So, you can see on there we have some solar lamps, rain barrel, the reclaimed wood benches, the brick on the bottom, and then there's also fluorofeld pockets, which are felt pockets that hold the plants onto the wall. And all the species on the wall will be native plants. And then there's one, or that's just a...
Here's a second image that shows it from a little bit better angle. And of course, we have the emblem for Georgia Southern to tie it back into the university, as well as the community. Any questions?
The rain barrel on the end, that will automatically water all the plants, or...
That's the hope. If not, if it needs to be supplemented, there will be minor supplementing for the water.
We're trying to make it self-sustainable, so that, we're trying to get all the water from the rain barrel. And it'll be with a pump and a timer, so it'll do it on its own, hopefully. Yep.
I heard you say something solar.
Oh, yeah.
Has solar lighting.
The little, the little triangle looking thing, so there's lights, and they're solar powered. Yep.
So, then we're on all night, or... A jump pop outside the family for us?
Could.
But I mean, it's designed to be on all night, right?
Yeah.
The lights, okay.
Yeah, could be, or you could set a timer.
I don't feel like it would.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thanks again for doing that on behalf of the city of the FabLab. Ms. Sue, do we have anybody that is registered for a public comment?
Okay.
Okay. So, this is it. All right. I would like to ask Council to look over the minutes and the consent agenda, and would feel so introduced that please have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda? As per...
Go have a second. Any discussion? Call them, please take that sign aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Agenda Item 6, an administrative hearing for alleged alcohol violation percentage, Chapter 6 of the City of Statesboro Alcohol Ordinance. I will read my usual opening remarks as it regards this part of our city council here meeting today. Now, we'll move on to considering whether certain persons or entities that hold an alcoholic beverage licenses issued by the city have violated the Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Statesboro regarding alcoholic beverages, and if so, what sanctions are appropriate under the ordinance. These cases are being brought by the Department of Public Safety against license holders. Before we proceed with those cases, I'd like to establish the general procedures these cases will follow. When sitting as a quasi-judicial body, the mayor and city council are not sitting as a court of mistake as defined in OCGA 24-1-2. As such, strict compliance with the Georgia Rules of Evidence provided for in Chapter 24 of the Official Code of Georgia is required. Rulings on the relevancy and immisibility of evidence and whether to hear argument in all of the points of order, including who shall address counsel, shall be made by the presiding officer pursuant to the authority granted to presiding officer in Section 2.2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Statesboro in light of the purposes of this hearing. The standard approved for determining whether violations have taken place is a preponderance of the evidence. In determining whether the preponderance of evidence lies, council may consider all the facts and circumstances of the case. The witnesses' manner of testifying, their intelligence, their means, and opportunity for knowing the facts to which they testify, the nature of the facts to which they testify, the probability or improbability of their testimony, their interest or vote of interest in their personal credibility, so far as the same may legitimately appear from the hearing. Both the Department of Public Safety and the licensee have the right to be represented by counsel, the right to present evidence and cross-examine the evidence presented by the opposing party. Finally, both the Department of Public Safety and the licensee enjoy the right to a filling decision here today to the Superior Court of Bullock County. I will ask Mr. Classus to come forward. Okay. Do you swear a part of the testimony you give here today shall be the truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see. This is a case that's been heard for an offense by Shenanigans at One University Plaza dated February 5th, 2015. The offense is a first offense. Lieutenant Bryan, do you have a decision or agreement that's made between you and Shenanigans?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Classus is here to represent Shenanigans. Mr. Franklin is prepared to enter into a Crawford Act plea.
Madam Mayor, council members, on behalf of Mr. Franklin, who apologizes for his inability to be here today, had a previously scheduled trip that he simply could not get out of. Nevertheless, he's authorized me to speak on his behalf and to acquiesce in accepting what we understand is the jointly recommended sanction of warning for this offense. It is the first within the twelve-month period he neither admits nor denies. Perhaps it might be analogized to a plea of no contest, or, since I'm a lawyer, no low contendry. Nevertheless, the license holder will not contest the imposition of discipline. We understand that traditionally it has been a warning under these circumstances, and that is what we've discussed in negotiations.
Do I have any questions by council? For Mr. Classus before I ask for a motion.
Mr. Classus, has anything been done since, I guess, February the 5th, 2015, to, I guess, increase the inability for the alleged violations to not occur again? Did I phrase that correctly?
I have only a problem with the phrasing. As I understand the facts, a false ID was presented to a doorman who was, as frequently as the case, fooled by the ID. Actually, I think it was an actual driver's license, but one that belonged to someone else. And as sometimes is the case, there was not a thorough examination of each and every jot and tittle on the license. Young fellow went in, became intoxicated later in the evening, engaged in misbehavior that caused him to be charged with crimes. On the next day of the investigation, the doorman was identified, who had been presented with the fraudulent identification, and that doorman was charged with being a party to the crime of minor possession of alcohol. The young man from the previous evening, obviously with the fake ID, was not old enough to legally purchase alcohol. And so, on account of the doorman's entry of a plea before the municipal court, the owner, Mr. Franklin, has become vicariously liable under the provisions of the ordinance to face the charge. And what has been done, I suppose, is a reiteration to those who work at the door to much, much more carefully examine each and every item of identification that is presented. Really, when fraudulent IDs are used, there is much more that a doorman can do than make a closer examination of each ID. And again, we're talking about IDs that are legitimate driver's licenses, albeit that of someone else who is older. I suppose, and I've never done this myself, but I suppose it would be a little bit simpler to discover an actual fraudulent, made-up ID. But to answer your question, yes, the folks who work at the door have been instructed to much more carefully examine the identification that's presented to them, to do everything they can to ensure that nothing like this happens again.
Any other questions for Mr. Classus?
Did the young man that was charged, did he go anywhere else that night?
I'd like to clarify something and also answer your question. Yes, he did. He did admit to going to Rum Runners later that night.
Did they get charged also?
They did not. There was no proof of the ID being used, et cetera, there. We don't know how he got in. The reason he was charged at Shenanigans, and to give you a little bit more, he was actually, the doorman was charged party to the crime of sale of alcohol to a minor. The minor that entered was also a coworker of his. He looked at an ID belonging to someone else. I think the burden there would have been a little different. He knew that gentleman's name. He could have seen the different name on the license page, et cetera. So, there is a little bit more to the story.
And again, it depends on which young man you're talking about. The young fellow who purchased the alcohol was charged with crime. The doorman who let him in, who, again, the statements I've seen indicate that, "Yeah, I knew he worked here, but I didn't know him. I didn't know how old he was," or anything like that. I don't know if he knew his name or not. But again, I've seen Mr. Bryan's reports and those with the circumstances. The young man who's responsible for Shenanigans was the doorman, not the young fellow who became intoxicated earlier.
Right. I guess I'm just asking, you know, if we're gonna go back and charge everybody after the fact, and they're not caught, why not charge Rum Runners with another offense also? Because, I mean, that's hearsay. I mean, technically, you didn't catch the guy there. Why not just go back and give him first offense? That's about as arbitrary as giving Shenanigans a first offense and something like catching him. If not...
Is Spencer Gilmore the doorman or the bartender?
He is the doorman.
He's the doorman.
I mean, didn't say... The delineation, I believe, between the two instances would be Mr. Gilmore has pled guilty in a competent court of jurisdiction to a criminal offense, which then attaches Shenanigans and Mr. Franklin to the conduct. With no criminal offense being charged for Rum Runners, and there only being certain potential evidence that he was there and that he possibly drank while there, I can say he was at Rum Runners.
Either way, it doesn't work at Rum Runners.
It doesn't work at Rum Runners. Even if he would have been drinking in there underage and been served, he still would have had a criminal violation, but that cannot be proved. Where the first violation at Shenanigans could be proven, that Mr. Gilmore has pled guilty in court and disposed of his case.
Again, I didn't intend to argue or anything, but your point is very well made, Council and Chance. There is no indication of whether and if so, how much alcohol the original young man consumed at any establishment. For all we know, he may have had a twelve-actor beer, and I don't know before he even went out to the places. But he did have the identifying wristbands from both locations. The one doorman that was identified was Mr. Gilmore. He, of course, no one alleges that Mr. Gilmore himself served any alcohol to the young man. He wasn't working in that capacity. But he did allow the young man entry after being presented with the fraudulent ID.
From somebody he knew?
None. No, no. So far as I know, there's no evidence that he knew whose ID it was. By looking at the ID, what the investigation shows is that, according to what Mr. Gilmore said, he looked at the data card and nothing else on the license. And again, earlier with Mr. Britt, we responded that... And again, earlier with Mr. Britt, we responded that doormen have been instructed to look further than just the date of birth, to make sure that the ID being presented is, in fact, the ID of the individual holding it. But the young fellow who went in was unknown to Mr. Gilmore, other than as an employee of the business. They didn't work in the same position. He had no idea how old he was. He just knew that he also worked here in some other capacity, not as a doorman. But again, that much I don't know. But the young fellow was another employee of the bar who presented the false ID. Mr. Gilmore was the doorman who was taken in by the ID.
Right. And I'm not trying to argue about this at all. More than once, Alvin has told us that this is an administrative hearing. There will be a separate municipal case. Those two are not necessarily the... I don't want to put words in your mouth, but like, that's kind of how...
They're unrelated, but the defendant's admission under oath in the municipal court that he violated the law, pled guilty, this is what you call an admission in judicial. He's admitted under oath that when he was working at Shenanigans, he violated the law or was party to the crime serving alcohol. That fact that you can, that admission can come in, say, into this here. That's what he's doing, using the admission made in municipal court to establish the fact that the defendant violated the law by his own admission under oath, pled guilty. Then our ordinance says, if you, if an employee of a business entity violates these ordinances in the courts of this department, that violation is imputed to the business entity also, as in our ordinance. But those, the evidence is the admission he made in municipal court. Not that he was convicted in municipal court, simply that he stood up in court and admitted to violating the ordinance. And then, by matter of law, in our ordinance, you use that evidence to impute the ordinance violation to the business entity.
All right. Then I guess the, then my question is, in our ordinance, for him to card him off age is illegal? Or for someone who served him alcohol is illegal?
By state law, he is party to the crime of the sale of alcohol to a minor because how they are set up, these doormen are actually doing the carding and putting a wristband on so that the bartender does not have to do that. Still the bartender's responsibility, and I'm sure you'll see a case on that in the future. However, when he identified that person as being over 21, he then became party to the crime of sale of alcohol to a minor, which is what he was charged with and what he's pled guilty to.
Was the bartender, in this particular case, charged or...
Was not. Could not be positively identified.
Was there more than one bartender?
There were, I believe, three bartenders working that night. This gentleman did not remember which bartender he was dealing with. And to answer questions earlier, he did state that he was drinking bourbon and Sprite in Shenanigans. So there goes further evidence to show that alcohol was served to him in that location. Whether he showed up after drinking the 12-pack or not, I don't know. And that's where we move forward with the basis of the charge there. If the bartender could have been positively identified, they would have been cited also.
And I will point out that, again, referring to the law, party to the crime requires a knowing participation or knowing the violation is going on, even if you weren't actively involved. The classic example is the guy who drives the getaway car when somebody goes in the bank and takes the money and comes back out. That fellow's a party to the crime because he knew what was going on. Again, we haven't contested that aspect of it for reasons that Mr. Franklin and I have discussed. You know, again, my job is not to make decisions for my clients, but simply to carry them through.
I apologize to drag it out. Just a order of events. Guy was arrested late at night. And then he went to court and admitted, admitted in court...
You actually have two guys, which is maybe where the confusion comes in.
The one who walked in the door and showed the fake ID.
Right, was arrested that night.
Was he caught with a fake ID?
Yes, he was and charged.
And does he look even anything like the fake ID?
Actually showed the fake ID to Mr. Gilmore, the second defendant in there, and asked him that same question, which he said he did not.
He does not look similar to the ID?
Not enough to pass muster. Matter of fact, his statement was, he should have done a better job doing his job.
And that's on the record?
That's, in their reports, correct. The bouncer, or the doorman, was identified, I believe, the next day.
But he was identified the next day. The original one who walked in with the fake ID...
Was arrested that night.
...drank at the bar, was arrested later on.
Correct.
And by his testimony, that was when, because of his testimony, the bouncer was...
Not his testimony alone. We found the three different people working the door after speaking with other employees, started bringing them in, and the gentleman that was working the door admitted to taking the identification from the first defendant and was identified that way. And he was cited several days after that interview to further go through this investigation and make sure that we were...
But to be clear, the bouncer, Mr. Gilmore, admitted to looking at the ID, admitted to seeing a discrepancy between the picture and the individual in question, the individual who was arrested, and admitted to letting him in.
That's correct. And that he should have done a better job in doing that. And further past his admissions of pled guilty in court to the offense.
Did he place an arm, a wristband on him to demonstrate that he was over 21 years old?
He did. He did. And if I could clarify, the young fellow, the drunkard to identify him without any confusion...
That's right.
...was interviewed the next morning. And I've also spoken with him, and as far as I can tell, what he said to me is what he said at his interview, which is, "I was so drunk, I don't remember anything." But he did have the two wristbands on. And on further interrogation, he said, "I don't know who let me in, but the three guys who usually work the door, this one, this one, and Gilmore." And then the investigation went to those three individuals. And when Gilmore was questioned, he said, "Well, yeah, I was working that night and I probably was the one that let him in. And all I did was look at the date. I should have done a better job of examining the license." That's the instruction that they've all been given now is henceforth, look at the entire thing, not just the date of birth. But I hope that clarifies things as to what has gone. Mr. Gilmore went to his arraignment in municipal court without benefit of counsel, entered a plea to the charge. There was fine, and he went away. He signed all the forms that would indicate he knew he was entitled to the variety of rights that we typically call Miranda rights. But nevertheless, he did what he did, got it out of the way. And it is Mr. Gilmore's municipal court entry of the plea that attaches to Shenanigans.
I got one more question for Al. So the drunkard, was this a... What was his crime? Is that something you can tell us? Was it just drunk underage? Was it a drunk robbery?
He has several. Now, he's not by law.
Okay.
Start off with possession of a false ID, possession of alcohol by persons under 21, public drunkenness, loitering and prowling, criminal trespass.
Okay.
The young fellow was intoxicated that ultimately in the evening, he ended up in the residence of someone. The residence, apparently to the fellow in his condition, looked similar to one he was intending to go to, but he gets going already. He was so drunk that he couldn't recognize a house.
There's an affidavit.
I was just curious if, you know, I mean, everything except for the criminal trespass, is anything in that a felony for everything?
All misdemeanors.
So we're taking it to the point where we're going back and investigating where the person got the alcohol from a misdemeanor?
When they are so drunk that they wind up in someone's house, and if that was in someone else, they could have been shot and killed. Yes, I think it's very necessary we do that. When we have people leaving these establishments in that condition, I believe it's necessary. The establishments also have a responsibility not to get someone so intoxicated to leave in that condition. So I do believe we need to hold them accountable for their actions.
And to continue violating my, I didn't intend to argue thing. Apparently from his statement, we know that he had a bourbon and Sprite at Shenanigans. We don't know which was his last establishment. We don't know what degree of intoxication he was in when he left that establishment.
I think how intoxicated he is is really not the question here. It's the fact that the bouncer let somebody in who he knew had a fake ID and let him into the establishment and has admitted to doing so. So I'm ready to make a motion on the hearing.
If I could respond to that. Fact of the matter is, the bouncer at the time did not know the ID was fake. He looked at the date of birth on the ID and he let the holder come in.
Then he didn't do his job. Because your job as the bouncer is to look at the picture and to put it with the face and then look at the date of birth.
And that's the instruction they've been given from now on, to do it more thoroughly, not just look at the date.
Okay. Do I have a motion for counsel finding that Shenanigans violated the City of State's alcohol ordinance on February 5th, 2015?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just had to know the discussion, I guess, is, this is kind of a different, something different than we've had in the past. But I think the bottom line of this one is, as Phil said, it is, he had an obligation to check an ID. He said he didn't check it. Unfortunately, that's, I mean, that's it. There's really no more to it. And what happens after that, this, you know, could have been worse, could have ended up somewhere else, but because of one employee's actions, not to do it, that's where we are.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have, as this is a first violation, counsel may consider one a suspension of the offender's alcohol license or warning as stipulated by the ordinance. Do I have a motion for counsel as regards punishment for the violation?
Motion for a warning.
Second.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Clasens.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all I have this morning. May I be excused?
Yes.
Okay. Agenda item seven is a consideration of a motion to approve the design plan for the City of State's for Georgia Southern University Fab Lab. Mandy Cody, who had a planning and zoning, has asked that we table that motion from today to June 2nd in order to provide a more complete presentation regarding final plans and budget costs for the fab lab. So we'll be doing that. Agenda item eight is a first reading and consideration of a motion to approve ordinance 2015-4, an ordinance approving warning, stewarding, termination of service for non-payment and billing adjustments. Mr. Chisholm.
Thank you, Mayor. In order to provide better consistency and also to provide staff with what I consider better guidance, we got together, I got together a committee made up of clerks' office, water sewer department, natural gas department, city attorney and engineering department. And this would be to give guidance on water and sewer related billing adjustments or potential billing adjustments. We've had in the past a very short policy, which is attached to the ordinance, and just felt like from some issues that had come up that we needed a better document, one that's easier to interpret and a little more formal. And I will tell you that it is a, what comes in every day and those types of questions and requests are very numerous and they differ a lot, so this isn't easy to put together. We actually met eight times to put the document that you have in front of you. I do think it's a good document. I think staff would agree to that. But again, we had to, we met so many times because every time we would read it, we would go line by line again with it just to make sure that we understood it. And there was just about always questions, and I think everybody on that committee could agree to that. But I think what you have in front of you is real good. And again, it has to do with billing adjustments for water sewer bills. But also something that we added in there that I think is important, I'm just remembering just three or four items in that section. It's under 1.7 miscellaneous provisions. There will be no employee of the City of State's for a member of the employee's household or immediate family shall be granted an exemption or adjustment as provided above to the water sewer bill without the written consent of the city manager. Second one is no appointed official of the City of State's for, such as the city manager, city clerk, city attorney and municipal court judge, or a member of the appointed official's household or immediate family should be granted exemption or adjustment as provided above to their water sewer bill without the written consent of the mayor. And then, no elected official of the City of State's for or a member of the elected official's household or immediate family shall be granted exemption or adjustment as provided above to their water sewer bill without the written consent of two other elected officials. So we thought that that brought some more clarity to it. And we'd, again, provide staff with that consistency and the guidance that they need to make the proper decisions. So I would just ask that y'all consider it in the form that we have in front of you.
Is that the only change from the original?
No, there's, the original is fairly short. That's what...
And then, and these three pages is what replaces it?
Is what's replacing that. And just about everybody that was on the committee is here. If you had any specific questions, they might want to answer as well.
Does this in any way extend the typical cutoff time for the standard residential customer?
No.
Having in the past on these city ordinances, you've actually said that the first reading is formality. We only need to pass it once technically. Yep? So is it, is it in the interest of consistent procedure to just announce this and then vote on it the second time?
Right. I think it's up for a first reading, a second reading.
First reading?
Just a first reading.
Well, I think the original understanding of first and second reading was it had to be passed at two separate council meetings in order to become an ordinance. But since, since, since I've been on that, of course, the change due to your interpretation, because you said that it only needs to be passed once to become an ordinance. So, but we've wanted to do kind of an announcement at one meeting and then pass it at the next meeting in order to give the public, give Al, give whoever else a chance to work them over for a couple of weeks.
That's right. That's sort of, as I understand, is the first and second reading is just a process called, you know, the business, the time the ordinance is being announced, embedded, put in paper. Through the... I don't think that's a legal requirement, you have a first and a second reading.
Just in standard practice, as I said.
So then, the assumption is we brought back in the next council meeting for a second reading and we vote on it separately?
That's true.
Okay.
In the way this ordinance is structured, the ordinance itself changes and the main form that changes is it talks about the adjustments and adopts these rules and regulations. And part of the benefit of doing that is we can simply go back and amend rules and regulations for some other reason, through practice and learn, or maybe other reasons to make adjustments, we can easily modify the regulations, bring them back to the original resolution, adopt it, modify it, without changing the regulations as needed, without having to re-adopt the whole regulations, pay for all costs associated with the change of laws.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on to agenda item nine? Okay. Agenda item nine is consideration of a motion to approve a ward of contract sites for the site for the city street resurfacing fiscal year 2015. Brad, could you please help?
Back in November, engineering department brought forth a list of streets that we had identified for this year's resurfacing list. We received two bids for this project, one from Sykes Brothers and one from Ellis Wood. And as you can see, the little bid from Sykes Brothers was 708,000, which was below our estimate of 741,000. Since the bid was considerably lower than our estimate, we're asking that for the flexibility that we can spend up... that we can spend up to our budget amount, which is 763,000, so that we can resurface some additional street mileage, since we have a pretty long list of streets that were backlog as far as resurfacing. Sykes Brothers has had our resurfacing for the last two years, and they've done good work, so we feel confident in awarding the contract at Sykes. I think the list of streets that we're resurfacing is included in the packet. If anyone has any questions?
Robert, are there any plans that, now that you're there, you noticing the other side of Gentilly having problems?
Yeah, that's on, it's on there.
It's on there.
The other lane.
I mean, does that, okay. That's all, I was wondering if that, so does that include some of the, now that you've got pieces sinking?
Yeah, unfortunately, last year, we would have done it last year, it's just money. So, until we got the money from GDOT this year, and we got into this fiscal year with the more SLOSS dollars being collected, we're going to hit the other lane. And unfortunately, Gentilly is one of those, it's a great example, that if you don't resurface your roads, you don't put the money in there to resurface them as often as you need, once you start losing, they get very expensive to fix, and that's what's happened at Gentilly.
Brad, just so that people on Edgewood don't freak out again this year, could you make sure they don't do, start that project on move-in weekend in August?
Yeah, we actually, we got a lot of calls on that that's here. For Gentilly Road and for Chandler Road, we, we have a deadline, and the deadline to complete those streets is August the 6th, and I believe school starts, I think, on August the 17th or somewhere in there, so.
Well, I will say this, and it's a good comment, that Councilman Boynton's making, I think we had that same deadline last year, and due to weather, et cetera, we didn't meet it, and what Councilman Boynton said, it was problematic. So, I mean, we better serve to wait until September to do that, when school has started and all of that, than to be right in the middle of it again on move-in day and everything else.
Last year, our deadline was actually a little bit closer to the starting date for school, so we moved it back a little bit, and we also put in some stiffer financial penalties to the contractor if they don't meet the deadline, so.
This year you did?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Money talks, doesn't it?
Did you talk about that? No, no, no. It is probably still better to stick with what we're doing versus doing later, because that traffic significantly goes up in volume when they're here.
When will they start?
Soon as we can.
Yeah, if contract approved date, we could be starting in roughly, I think, three weeks at best, so.
Okay.
Just tell them it's private.
Robert, I got a question, it's not on this list, but it's not even in my district. Savannah Avenue, what is, when are we going to go in and do some significant repairs to that road? That is terrible.
Yeah, it's, there's a project ongoing now, we're just waiting for the consultants to finish their designs, we're looking at the summer, to let it this summer. Now, that includes, it's got water sewer that has to be done in front of it, and so the actual road work won't go until probably maybe three months after they start.
Brad, I believe you just got the final, or the plans are, you just got them today for review, some of the revisions for Savannah project, is that right? Or they're coming in today?
We're working on some revisions on it yesterday, so.
They're close to the final.
Yeah, I think we're looking at July.
Okay.
When they had, I came to that neighborhood meeting about the, or just the presentation, and when did we, in that meeting, when did you say that that work would be done? Because there was a timeline, it was set in that meeting that the folks that live on the street were, you know, shown.
Actually completed or started?
Started.
Started and completed.
We'd said, I think we're sticking to the same thing, we haven't missed that. I think it's July, and I don't remember the total length of time for water sewer and resurfacing, but I'm guessing it's better part of six to nine months.
Yeah, the pavement was probably in the fall while it painted.
Yeah, so the original timeline that was presented to the neighborhood has been here too.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, West Parish is the same type of, the Savannah Avenue is, they were both, all part of the GDOT. That used to be the Highway 80 and 80 Cent. And again, it's a money thing, but once we get the technique down, we're going to utilize on Savannah, then we'll, we've got it in either next year or that following year for West Parish.
Soon this fiscal year?
West Parish is in.
Which, we moved it up to this fiscal year.
So, at what, 16, next fiscal year?
Yeah, that's what I'm going to say, 16.
Next fiscal year, so hopefully it'll be back-to-back.
Sure.
Believe me, yeah. You know, that's one of those things that, we see all of this, it's just the money.
I mean, the SLOSS, the SLOSS fund is really part of the money, again, if we're going to farm a piece of it.
That's right.
What, is there an issue because the original bid came in in the amount of 708,000 dollars for a set piece of work? So, by extending that amount to 763,000, is that problematic? Did that's not rebid up to that, or?
No.
I'm assuming it's not, but can you explain why that is not problematic?
We utilize unit prices. We haven't broken down enough, so they're contractually obligated to those unit prices, so we'll strip.
We're just adding more units on it versus, okay.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Okay, so they came back, both bid in, both Ellis Wood and Sykes Brothers bid in unit?
That's right.
And that, so it wouldn't matter the number of units per site?
The pavement's really paid for by the ton of asphalt, so we can extend that out as needed.
Okay.
And, I mean, Robert, that's in the case you guys are starting to fix something, then maybe something falls apart, or, you know, oh, shoot, we should do an extra 40 feet or 50 feet or something like that, right?
Right.
Gives you the flexibility not to come back and talk to us every time.
That's right. That's why we.
We appreciate it.
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the ward of contract to Sykes Brothers Inc. for city street resurfacing fiscal year 2015 not to spend in excess of 763,230 to 11 cents?
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Is this Prater here? Very quiet and slinky in that. Consideration of a motion to declare certain listed items a surplus and disposed of as recommended by Darren Prater, purchasing director, Jason Bowles, senior assistant engineer.
Yes, if this is per ordinance, anytime we get rid of city property that's paid for by tax money, we have to bring it to the council for approval. These items listed includes a generator and other various equipment. The generator, I believe, was bought long ago off state surplus. There is a retention for items we get off state surplus, but it has far exceeded that amount, so these are eligible to liquidate. So, we typically do this through gov deals, as we have the public work, most of that program. We recommend surplusing the list that was provided.
Do we have any other questions or any questions for Mr. Prater? Okay. Do I have a motion to declare certain listed items contained in the packet a surplus and disposed of as recommended by Darren Prater, purchasing director, and Jason Bowles, senior assistant engineer?
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Oh, consideration of a motion to award the sale of surplus property. 3.310 acres of an acre located adjacent to Crescent Avenue to the Statesboro Premium Baptist Church in the amount of $600.
This is land where we took seal bids for purchase of. We set a minimum of $500. It's 0.310 acres located near Statesboro Premium Baptist Church. We advertised several weeks in paper, publicly notified. We received one bid, per ordinance, we have to state that we're going to accept one bid that approved, and we have. We got one bid of $600 for Statesboro Premium Baptist Church. It is contingent upon whoever purchases the property has to finish out a cul-de-sac per city requirements, and they understand this, and so, and here is a representative of Statesboro Baptist Church.
You want to come up, Ms. Walker? If you don't mind introducing yourself.
Vince Walker, board of directors of Statesboro Premium Baptist Church.
But again, we recommend the sale of this, we feel, everybody's been duly notified. I think it's what we recommend.
And is this, is this part of the piece of property that, kind of, as they're redoing the CEBG and all that area, this is that, it will allow you, it's contiguous to your property, and will allow you to put up a gate to kind of, so people aren't cruising through your parking lot fast.
That is correct.
So what are the, what do you, what is church going to do with the property once they have it?
We haven't planned yet. Joey Maxwell's helping us.
But I mean, the.
The parking lot, increase the parking lot.
Right.
Nothing to be built on the land, is what I've been told, so they'll need to, you know, build it still, but just to use it for probably increase market.
And what did you say there was part of that, that the church has to do?
They have to finish out the cul-de-sac per city of Statesboro specifications, and they understand this is part of the bid, by the Supreme.
All cul-de-sacs have a Ferris wheel, a line. I think you've seen the newer.
About seeing that.
Robert, so, I mean, how do we just end up with surplus property?
This is actually a part of that road closure. If you recall, there was, it was a circle that went around this, it was a road that went around this, and over time, the church has purchased the majority of the property on the one side, and the road really became unnecessary. So, part of this process, and it's taken a while, is the, first was the agreement in the public, meeting to abandon that road. And it's, it's the right thing to do. I'm not always for the abandonment of roads, but in this case, the road really wasn't serving anybody. There's a, being that it's a circle, there's a road on the other side, most people utilize it, so closing this makes a lot of sense. And then it makes a lot of sense that they, that the church in this case be required to finish the cul-de-sac so that the road system ties in, and it makes a lot of, it just works like it should work, so.
So, I usually compare this part of what we did for Baptist Church of Harris Street up here.
Right.
Am I right?
Yes.
And then, United Methodist Avenue, Ballina Street.
Yep.
And they all ask me about the same thing.
Very similar, very similar.
Any more questions?
Yeah, you said you set the minimum of $500?
Yes.
To charge? Do we have to do that?
We didn't have to, no. We just figured, there's a minimum amount of value. And to be honest, I think the amount that we're worried the church will spend to install the cul-de-sac will far exceed the amount we have.
We have to.
We have some calls going in, beginning with property, the cops, or, so, we talked about it, $500, did over the city's costs, sort of getting.
Okay. Okay. If it ain't cost us anything, I mean, after I hate to charge the steward, the community and especially church, but we incurred costs. That's all.
Okay. Do I have a consideration of a motion to award the sale of surplus property, 0.31 acres located adjacent to Crescent Avenue to the Statesboro Premium Baptist Church in the amount of $600?
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Agenda item 12, consideration of a motion to set the public hearing for fiscal year 2016 budget for Thursday, June 4th, 2015 at 4:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall. Mr. Cheshire.
This is just part of the formality now that we've gone through, the, as y'all recall, the budget retreat, and we're still working on the final parts of the budget, but this is something that we require to set the actual date and time so we can advertise it properly. And we were looking at June the 4th at 4:00 PM right here in the council chambers, if that was okay with everybody.
It's a Thursday.
That work? Do I have a motion to set the public hearing for the fiscal year 2016 budget for Thursday, June 4th, 2015 at 4:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall?
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item 13, consideration of a motion to appoint a voting delegate and flag bearer for the 2015 GMA Annual Convention at Savannah. It's that time of year to do so, and in lieu of voting them separately, it just made sense to put them together. As your voting delegate and flag bearer, do I have a nomination for a voting delegate and flag bearer for the 2015 GMA Annual Convention at Savannah?
Second. Y'all can do that, but they, the vote is usually on Monday or Tuesday, I hope they'll be there, you know, I'm going back and forth.
Oh, Monday is.
Nominee here or there.
There you go.
I nominate Gary Lewis.
Got to be anywhere after noon.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Councilman Lewis.
Is that the 20th or the 26th?
My.
I've got it down twice on my calendar, so.
It says the Sunday, June 15th.
For the last week.
And then the, the Friday, Saturday afternoon.
Okay. Agenda item 14, other business from city council. I got a couple of things, but I'll defer to council, see if anybody has anything before I mention mine. Okay. Item number one is, and I had notified each of you individually, that the alcohol work session originally scheduled on May 15th was going to complete at the time that was scheduled. Didn't realize Alvin had vacation. And since he broke them, obviously, he'll be gone that week. He needs to be here, so we can look at, reschedule it the following week, the week of the 20th, which is the 2nd, what's today, the 5th? All right, so 14th, be the week of the 21st, I guess. To reschedule that for the following week after Memorial Day? Do y'all have a preference to do it the same? We can do it the same week as the next council meeting or move it to the following week? I think in an attempt to try to, like was discussed at last council meeting, to try to get as close to having something ready to go by July 1st, I need to make one of those two weeks to do that. Do I have any suggestions from council?
26, 27.
What date are those?
My, Tuesday, Wednesday. Unless we do it after council on the 19th, or before council on the 19th.
You, I mean, you have to allow us a amount of time to do that, but that's obviously completely up to you guys, which one do?
I can't do it the week of the 18th, there's 22 at all.
26, 27, one of those two days.
27.
What's that, that's a Wednesday, though? What time are you thinking about, what time do I want to do it?
I don't have anything on my calendar, you tell me.
I say we'll start early afternoon and see if we can.
3?
Yep. That work?
Yeah.
Okay, so do I have a motion to move the alcohol work, the alcohol ordinance work session, I hate to say alcohol work session, that sounds so wrong, to the 27th of May at 3:00 PM in council chambers?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The other thing is just an announcement that Ms. Linda Akins stopped by the office and wanted to make sure that all officials and everyone that they are aware of that this Thursday, May 7th at 12:00 noon is National Day of Prayer on Courthouse Square and would provide all to its. Okay, I'll now move to the part of our agenda for city managers' comments.
Just got one item, it's an announcement. The Bullitt County Historical Society invites the public to the dedication of the Renzomps Park located at the intersection of West Jones Avenue and Parker Street. This event will be held on Thursday, May 15th from 5:00 to 6:00 PM with refreshments being served starting at 5:00. Reverend Craig Trimble of the Second Street Second St. John Missionary Baptist Church will deliver the dedication at 5:30, and there'll be entertainment as well from the choir, so invite everybody to be there.
You said 5:00 PM?
5:00 PM. It's a beautiful park, and they've done a lot of improvements there, a lot of vegetation has been added, and it's very nice to look forward to the ceremony. Appreciate the Historical Society driving that. That's all we got.
Okay, Ms. Sue, do we have any follow-up comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Thurman Tillman, I'm a partnership specialist for the 2015 test census.
society driving that. That's all I got.
Okay, Ms. Sue, do we have any follow-up comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Thurman Tillman, I'm a partnership specialist for the 2015 test census. Just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware that we are in the midst of a census right here in Bullet County as well and Statesboro. The reason we have this test census is to get ready for the 2020 census and this census is online, so if people just go to, don't look for any forms to come in the mail, just go online to census.gov/2015, fill out the form and that will do it. And take less than 10 minutes, depending on how many people in the household, of course, 10 people in the household, take a little moment. You just say I sit by the keys, go online and fill it out. Come 2020, the census quite possibly will be online, because they save federal government about $5 billion by doing it online versus sending out to every household. We know there's some places that do not have internet access as well as others, so we're partnering with everybody we possibly can partner with to help those get internet access that may not have, and the schools, libraries and other places like that. I have partnership packets for everyone and we ask you to go through there. If you have any questions, please feel free to leave me, call me, I have, I leave my card and my email address, but we're looking forward to working with all of you, getting others to partner with us. The next, this will conclude on May 31st, so Villa couldn't wait any longer to get to you about this, so we started March 23rd, be over May 31st. And on the third weekend, we're having sort of a census awareness weekend, particularly with all the faith-based organizations making Sunday and a census Sunday, so we make sure all the churches in place of worship will talk to the individuals about participating.
And to be clear, Savannah, including Statesboro and Phoenix, Arizona, those are the only two test locations in the whole US, are they not?
That is correct, it's two different tests, but the Savannah media market is testing for online. The Arizona test is testing for follow-up, how do you follow up in the demographics? So the test area was 20 counties, three in South Carolina, 17 in Georgia, and out of that, it sort of mirrors the United States as far as rural, urban, grays, just the demographics of poverty, wealth, all of that, sort of mirrors the United States, so that's why this area was chosen. Less than a million people, enough for a good test, but not too much to be, cost too much.
Molder, y'all considered trying to do something at one of the farmers markets? And said, you got a lot of different groups that come through there, maybe that'd be an opportunity to, before you leave, tell the, ridiculously handsome man right in the middle there and tell him about that.
And I'll be at the Bullet County meeting tonight, boy.
Thank you very much.
I'll ask him out.
I think you're the only one that can get away with saying that, Ms. Chamberlain.
I already filled mine out online, but you said my wife has a, whoever.
No, no, just one person. Yes, thank you. And they can do it on iPad, cell phone, any electronic way you get it done. So, yeah.
Thank you.
If you're looking, if you're always talking about government waste, use your opportunity, go online, fill out your census.
Okay, at this point, I'd like a consideration of a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So move.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.